All right, welcome, everybody. We are going to get started for the May 23rd School Board Meeting. So we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual liberation, and justice for all.
First order business is approval of the minutes from the May 9th meeting. We have motion to approve the minutes as written. We have to. We have a second. We have to roll call the tip to Shelley. So Shelley, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Lissa?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right. Next up is recognition of visitor public input. Do we have any anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody online? All right, so we will move on. Next order of business is to report of the administrators and Laurie, I'll hand it up to you.
Thank you very much. COVID is still here. You hear news every day how the numbers are going up. In your report, I just provided you a brief update as to what we're seeing. We are seeing a little uptick here. We, we do realize that, you know, we, every day when we do meet, we talk about COVID numbers and and our biggest concern is if there's in-school transmission. That's not something that we're seeing here at the moment. But we're monitoring all the situations. Our nurses would like me to say to everyone, if you're sick and don't feel well, please don't come to school. Take care. And hopefully, you know, if you need to, go see your doctor or take a test. And, and we're here to help you. If you have any questions, please feel free to call our nurses. We also met as a COVID leadership team last week. We meet periodically during the past year and a half. And that team is comprised of school board members, all of our administrators, directors, and union reps as well. During this meeting, we decided that we're at the point of, we know how to handle the situation. We're doing a good job in the district. And we are not going to be meeting anymore during this school year. If necessary, this team will be called back together next year. We will still do daily reports of the number of cases that we have in the district, looking at our capacity to safely have school. And also, if there's any other things that we need to look at. So we'll be done on a daily basis, but we're not going to be on a formal meeting basis. We will still send out weekly emails to the community just to let them know exactly what's happening. The dashboard is still there. We modified the dashboard a little bit to provide you updated information and that's updated on a daily basis. I have to thank everybody that was part of the COVID leadership team. They worked really hard. I also want you to know that we had a medical advisory, COVID medical advisory team. And we've had our last meeting as well. I'd like to thank Dr. Laura and Dr. Shaw being on that team. Provided a lot of medical background and information that we wouldn't have normally been able to obtain. The second thing on my report today is the ESTER grants. As you know, we all talked about this. Everybody has gotten millions of dollars from the federal government. It came in two forms, ESTER 2 and ESTER 3. And ESTER 2, we've been using this year mostly for academic intervention, summer programs, speech and language, psychologists, things along that line. And I wanted to have you see exactly what dollar amounts that were allocated and the years that they're being allocated for. It's really important for us to take the ESTER money and make sure that it is useful over a period of time. And what we wanted to do is see the actual implementation of some of the programs from '21, '22 into next year, and then use an ESTER 3 funds to really carry it over to '23. If you're looking for a speech or language pathologist or a social worker, which we can't find, by the way, we want to make sure that people realize this is not just a one-year job. This, this is a commitment from this district. And we're going to be using the ESTER funds to cover these type of expenditures. We did summer programs. The building management system was part of the energy control, energy conservation program that we allocated from Johnson Control. That was in there. District summer programs, after-school programs. We did put a social worker in and hopefully we're able to find somebody that is in our neighborhood and wants to come to work here. So I don't know if people have questions about it, but it was, it's very beneficial ones for us to do things that we normally couldn't do. And ESTER 3, I did put in the, with the board's permission, the air quality assessment. And again, you know, that is open. Added on, you could do whatever you would like to do as time moves on with ESTER 3. If you decide to go with upgrading the ventilation system, or if you decide to look at asbestos abatement throughout the district, you have that flexibility because there is $4 million there in very little that is being allocated. But I needed to allocate something. And that shows the longevity of the grants and positions that we have to really attract people coming to our district. Before we go on, is there any questions about ESTER or that I could answer? The next part is really talking about assistive technology. And I'd like to ask Sandra and Sarah to do a presentation on that part.
So I'm here today. I have a few other members of our team here. I just wanted to update the school board and the community also where we're at with accessibility. First, I just want to say I'll introduce you to you. I want to say I have Sarah Valley. She's our speech or language pathologist and then also our assistive technology expert. Done a good way, put it. Emma Kowalski's here with us tonight. She's the Student Service Coordinator. Join our team. Heidi Plummer's here. She's one of our special educators. I think online, my friend Beth, she's a regular education teacher, literature teacher, and also our UDL scholar. And then in addition to that, on our team, we've really expanded it. We still have some more people we need to add on to the team. I think they're all listed up there. There's Carla Boynton who's going to be with us today. She's our K8 Library Review Generalist. And then if we move to the next slide, they'll list additional team members that we have. Again, I don't want to read them all, but Selena Garrison, our Technology and Creation Specialist, language occupational therapist. Marissa Benz, our Special Education Teacher. Kristin Wilson's also a member of our team, the director of CIA. And then we did mention CAS on there also, and then New Hampshire Education Department, obviously. The next thing I want to talk about is just some common language. And I did share, I hope you guys all had a chance to read through. So I'm not going to go through all of that, but I'm sure everybody had a chance to read that. So if you want to just review some common language, assistive technology, any item used to increase or improve or maintain a functional capacity with disabilities. So that would be like, maybe like a switch. If you're going to use a switch to make something more accessible to use, like maybe a larger keyboard. It's like that. When we talk about accessible educational materials, that's print and text-based material designed to be usable across student variabilities of media type. And actually, tonight, we have an activity we're going to ask everybody to do to demonstrate what we're talking about instead of just talking about accessibility. So I'm going to let Sarah take over this piece of it, and then I'll jump back in. Is there?
Sure. So. So what we wanted to do was sort of talk a little bit and give you a demonstration of what it might be like to be a student who has a reading disability. We have a lot of students in our district who have reading disabilities. And we've been working really hard on making sure that we can provide all of our students with timely access to assistive technology and to accessible media. And so that's where we partnered with the National Accessible Educational Materials Project. And I know you've read a little bit about that. But so what I want everyone to do, our club doesn't have a second timer on it, or maybe you can use your phones if you can. What I want everyone to do is flip over what you have in front of you and time yourself reading it and then write down how long it took you to read. Know how long it took you to read it. Helps to know that I know what it is. Once you get it, you can get it if you get it, but. Okay, so I'm going to stop you because obviously it took some of you longer than others. So that's an example of what it might be like if you have difficulty decoding or difficulty with visual processing, which are some of the types of reading disabilities that students have. So one of the tools that we have as a piece of, or a way to provide students with accessible media, and I kind of messed with you. Some of you got really squiggly fonts. Some of you got it small. Some of you got it large. So some of you are still trying to read. So, but what we have as one of the tools that you as a school board have supported us in being able to purchase is this software that's called Snap and Read. And our students can use this if they have a reading disability, such as what you may have just experienced. They can use this tool. Sorry. Okay, so you get. I'm pausing. Stopping, sorry. So you get an example. So what happens in this software is the student, this is just set to the generic, but the student spends time setting up the voice to be the way that they want it to sound, the speed to be sped up or slowed down, the highlight colors, all of those pieces are set up to be how they need it to be. So we just wanted to sort of share that experience with you. And when we think about, when we're talking about assistive technology, it's that difference between handing them a textbook that is difficult to read as you just experience, or providing them with the ability to have that.
What's been nice for us, I have to say, is this particular tool typically is used with students with disabilities, memory disability. But when I looked at the cost of purchasing it for the number of students we have in the district, we actually saved money by getting it for everybody. So this is something that's accessible to all of our students and all of our teachers in the district. So that's really nice. And that's something that we've been able to support, not just our special education students, but all of our students. So we have Don Johnson College Package and provides us many different tools. And Sarah, if there's any questions, she can answer more about that. But by purchasing the entire district package, I was actually able to save money purchasing it for just our students who are identified. So that's been nice.
And then it also works with a national accessible media website called Bookshare that our students access. And that is an online library that has all of the textbooks we might use, all of the reading material, has periodicals. It has all of the different things that students might want to read, including books that they might choose to read or listen to in the summer, for summer reading, or things that aren't necessarily just about plastic. They can access whatever they want. And that is only available for students who have disabilities. So there's a process by which we certify that they have a documented disability and can access accessible.
And what's been nice, I want to say, is that even though we're here today, and it's, you know, 2022, this district has taken accessibility as a priority since 2016. So back in 2016, there was a team, a small team, a small cohort of people, regular education teachers, special education teachers, Sarah in particular, that dealt with assistive technology, were part of a New Hampshire initiative. And what was nice is at that point in time, they were working with New Hampshire DOE and then also CAS, which is the Center for Applied Special Technology. And they created the Palma and Regional School District AT website. So you can find that if you go under Student Services. And then look under our page, we have our own tab under that. If you click on that tab, that'll take you to many different areas of accessibility. Sarah did a phenomenal job with her team with setting that up, which is really nice. And then Sarah, if you want to speak to a little bit about your work through the New Hampshire Assistive Technologies Leadership Team.
So at the end of the 2016 to 2019 group that got together, there was 11 schools from New Hampshire that participated in that. There was a group of us that got smaller, but wound up being about six of us who worked with CAS and the New Hampshire Department of Ed to condense, or we'll just call it quiet, quality indicators for assistive technology. And to condense that and create a New Hampshire guide for assistive technology that walks schools through the process of all the different indicators. Whether you consider assistive technology as a number of indicators. And we created forums that can be used for IEP teams and talk about different types of disabilities, what you might try. A process for evaluating the effectiveness, a practice process for documenting in an IEP, for training staff and students, all of those components. And so it's also called the Purple Book. And it's available for any educator in New Hampshire to download for free. So we had that. And then there was a second cohort from 2019 to 2021. We did not, as a school-centered group, I did some work with them. And some work with the state, and I'm still working with the state on building the State Department of Ed and assistive technology. And then, right, and then starting in 2020, we worked, started to work with the Department of Ed on this grant that allows us to be one of three schools that are working on accessible media. And that coincides with higher ed. There's a college team, an early childhood, a family team, and a job and career team. So it's a statewide coalition of people who are participating in this national training and work.
And again, what's nice about this is it goes hand in hand with the work the district's already been doing with UDL, Universal Design of Learning. It goes hand in hand with the PACE, so that performance assessment of competency of education, and then also Response Intervention, RTI. So even though there's definitely a special education component to this, what I really like is that we always talk about this is accessibility for all students. It really doesn't get all the students in our district. It's not just one small cohort. And that's what I really love about this team that we're developing. And again, we're still trying to, we're going to add to our team. We really need more high school representation. We need to get peer professionals on board, reading specialists on board. But it's nice because we have representation across the district. And I think that really speaks to where we're heading with this, that we're not just focusing on a small group, but really focusing on the needs across the district, which is a little bit. So I'm excited about that. We did this past year, look at the next slide, we did conduct a survey, it was a simple survey that we conducted, just again, it's some information on where we are with teachers, educators using the accessibility of materials. And if they're even aware of what we have in the district for accessibility. And I know this is hard to read from where you're sitting, but it just kind of gave us about 83 respondents. And I think we questioned a little bit about the number of respondents, but some people may have, it may have been counted twice, and something maybe to look at, maybe word the data. But you'll see, like, most people are aware of large print books. So we talked about that. Some people are aware of books on CD. But not everybody's aware of all of the tools we have. So that's one thing we, we're aware of now is how do we increase education awareness, everybody? Is there anything on that? Any, do you guys want to add? Emily, anyway?
I just think, I think that it captured well, that we don't necessarily have a process for sharing out and provide professional development across the district. But we have a lot of resources and tools here. Yeah. And then we conducted that survey in January, February. Yeah.
I want to say question until the end is any here?
No, anyway.
So the PowerPoint's very informative, right? And I'm on the AT portion of the, what I assume is the AT portion that you're discussing on the website, which is under Departments and under the Student Services section. So can something like this be shared there? Because it's great to see it, you know, here today. And we are being taped now, so people can go back and listen to you again. But it would be nice if it was also loaded on your section of the website because it has some really great information.
Yeah, we definitely talked about the one thing we were doing, we started to analyze the data to, you know, we, what's nice about this, and there's like five questions. We actually just pulled out this one slide that seemed to really kind of take everything into account. It's just, did we really accurately hit what we wanted to? It really got us thinking and engaging. It's a really thoughtful discussion as to where do we go with this? So we can definitely share that and share some of the thoughts behind what we are thinking too. Yeah, definitely. So the next slide, it really is just comments and questions. We kept this very brief tonight. We'd love to come back again and continue to update the board of where we're at and where we're heading with this. We just wanted to revisit this and let everybody know that it's something that's prior to us. And again, the team's been phenomenal. I'm super impressed. This is right during the middle of COVID that we got this award, which is fantastic. But then it was also, now what do we do with everybody reading remotely? And so I think it's been nice. This team puts in time above and beyond the workday. So I really appreciate that on their own. And they're really dedicated to it. And it's been a nice group of people who are continuing to expand. So I'm just excited to be part of it. If anybody else has any questions yet.
Are all the textbooks available? People's free?
Yes. So basically, I think it's since 1998, probably, by now, it's more than that. Pretty much every textbook that's been published is available off of it. Let's do the, through NEAC, National Accessible Education Materials, and Bookshare has those books all available digitally.
Sometimes you have to tell them and they put it on, but it, it, they have to be available.
Yeah. They, they all need to be available. We haven't bumped into any that kids have looked for that they, that we haven't been able to get other than a few kids who were down at the tech center and were looking for something like the firefighter's manual. And we, but we were able to get that through the publisher, just takes some, like, work. But all, and it is like a library. So I often say, there's two different levels. So there's one level where it's an organizational membership, and we have to assign the students books. And there's another level where the students can download their own books. But it is a library that does have adult books. So before we do that, the parents have to sign off and understand that their students have access to any book that they want. Not necessarily. This will. But yes, they are.
Does it do well with math textbooks? Because I teach math and I always wonder.
So there's some new, there's some new ways that you can use assistive technology to read math? The question to that is, it depends. And, and there's some software, there's some new software, well, it's not super new, but called Equatio, where teachers can write, can put their math into it, and it can read, and students can type their math answers or dictate their math answers. It takes some training and work, though. It's not.
Yeah, and the, the part with, with math that I, that I have found, if I, if I may.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the part with math that I have found is that I have, I had a student, a college student that's working with, who had a physical disability. And so he has, he has, has, he has not had to, he still has scribble palsy. So with asbesticity, why, it was very, it was difficult for him to use. Because there is no dictation in Equatio to be able to say like, six, right, and type to six, you know. It will, because his computer would type S I X, but it would not put a six in. So he had to push the number six. So it was, and then he had to push the times, and then he had to, you know. So he had to be able to get to those spots. And so that was, it would took him a long time.
Yeah. And there's really complex ways to do it with like Dragon and scientific notebook and devices. But that takes a lot of setup. And if we were going to do that honestly here, we would probably have an outside AT specialist.
Right. And, and he was in one math class, so he wasn't going to do all that. Yeah.
Yeah. And so I just want to applaud you for rolling this out to all students. Because, you know, we all know who work in education, that there are always those students who aren't caught, right? That fall between the cracks, that they're, you know, they're, for whatever reason. So, yeah, kudos to you, nineteen. Thank you.
Yeah, I really, I really feel strongly that we need to address the needs of all of our students. And then as we move up the tiers, we'll be able to address our needs of our special education students. And I have to say, the administration's always very supportive of that, all the principals and superintendent and all the administration. So it's really worked out really well since I've taken this position. And it's exciting to me to find ways that we can do that, that financially, we can meet the needs of our special education students, but also still meet the needs of all of our students in the district. So, so, yeah. Well, thanks for taking the time. Like I said, thanks for everybody coming. And as you can tell, Sarah's a wealth and knowledge, just Emma also. So we're lucky to have these people on our team. Thanks.
Thank you. Great work.
Lee, could you finish your report? Yeah, I wasn't sure. Yeah.
Thank you. Also, we have talked about the ESTER grant. And I just want to bring to the board's attention a report from Bill Body about the asbestos abatement. We're not asking the board to make any decisions at all. We just want to present that information, give it to you on the facilities. You should really look at it as well and have further conversations. But Bill is here tonight, in case you have any questions. We're not doing any proposal. We're just giving basic that information out there about asbestos. And I want to thank Bill for taking the time to go teach one of the buildings and analyzing what is needed in each one. But it is definitely something that we've been trying to do on a very rolling, type of procedures, but we have not been able to finish the project throughout the district. Is there anything else that you'd like to say about it?
Just if they have any questions.
I just wanted to say thank you for wherever you are behind that poll. You know, it was obvious that you, you went there and took an inventory of everything, and it was a pretty detailed report. You know, I know, like, the specific dollar amount, as you said in the report, was not, you know, it's an estimate, but I think that it gives us a very good idea of what the project entails and how much there is to do that. So as, as far as I'm concerned, it was a good, good overview of, of that need. So I appreciate that. Thank you. I mean, as far as, another go. The reason that we asked for that was so that we would have, you know, additional potential options for the, the use of that money. So, you know, that is something that we'll just have to use in the future when we're taking that decision. So, you know, that is something that we'll just have to use in the future when we're making that decision.
I have a question. Hello? Do we have any figures of how much we've spent on asbestos to date?
Historically?
Yes.
I'm sure that's information that we can go back and give you an approximate number, and we'll be happy to get that for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Started back in nineteen eighty-nine, when they did their first year of, here at the center. I mean, since, in the whole of the last thirteen years.
Shelley, did you hear that?
I heard since eighty-nine, and then maybe astronomical amount of money. He said astronomical, I believe, but that's about all I heard.
Uh, yeah, I was more just that it's been going on since eighty-nine, so. All right, Dave, take it, please.
Hey, I think everybody can hear me correct? Good. I sent a packet from May the seventeenth, we ran a financial report for the board. It shows that we have approximately one point one million dollars available at that point. So it's progressively going down as we get toward the end of the year. I'm not I'm not sure that it's going to get down to a point where there will be nothing left, if you will, in the unreserved fund balance. I think that what you have in front of you, it'll probably drop below a million by the time we do this report again. And then, as you know from the March meeting, we had five hundred thousand dollars being approved to go to the trust funds. So you'll, you'll have somewhere in the neighborhood of a half a million, if you will, toward the end of the year, unless there are some, some other costs that we don't see. But we have everything that we know of at this point on purchase orders, so it's encumbered, so I'm not sensing that that's going to go down. And again, this is only the expenditure side of things, this is not the revenue side of things. We do have revenues that have exceeded what we expected, so that will also come back into the unreserved fund balance at the end of the year.
Do we know how much revenue is above what was booked?
In particular around tuition, I think there may be hundred and fifty thousand more than what was projected for tuition. It's not a bad thing, it's a good thing. However, one of the pieces that, going forward, my suggestion would be as you put your budgets together and so forth, you might be able to get a little bit closer when you do your projections for tuition than what you have in this particular year. So I when you don't estimate, if you overestimate, that's, that's, that's another problem. But underestimating by substantial piece, you can, you can fix that during the tax rate setting and then the budget procedure going forward. And just a suggestion that, you know, as you know, Jamie, every time we do this as, as business officials, that's the, the magic that we try to come up with to predict, to protect everything, so that it's a reasonable amount, but always to be on the plus side of things rather than the negative side.
Right, always cautious. So more money in tuition, is there any of the lines in revenue where we're, where we're short?
Not substantially. All, what I'll do is I'll do another report, but there's nothing substantial there. I mean, you might be off thirty or forty thousand dollars, but in the scheme of things, that's not, I mean, you've more than made up for it on this line.
Yeah, I'm just curious what the net might look like.
I'll have a better handle on that. And again, when you get a, a person like myself, that was, you know, that came in mid-cycle, you don't have that historical idea of of where these revenues are come. And again, you'll experience that a little bit going forward, because when Mary comes on board, she would not have seen this cycle before. So again, you'll have to just be cautious when, when you're setting up the budget to some degree.
Look at the historical numbers.
And you know, and things like, you know, every time the Health Trust does, you know, you get your money coming back from the Health Trust, that's like a, you can't project that, and you just take the money and return it. So I guess, are there any questions on on the report? When I think your next board meeting is June the sixth, I will try to put something together for you. I'll update the financials, but I'll also bring in the revenues and try to be a little bit more precise going forward. What I won't be able to do and what I won't guarantee is the exact amount of money that you'll have on June the thirtieth to, and you won't, and you really won't know that until you go through the audit process, or, you know, I would actually do the D O E twenty-five to any extent. And the next school board meeting is June the thirteenth? Okay, I'll have that, I'll have an update for you by that time.
Thank you, I really appreciate this report, it's nice to see it.
Again, if you see the same report in, in the same fashion all the time, and it begins to make sense for you folks, you can, you can watch the changes going forward, and if we, if we start to play around with the report and do it in a different format, while it might work, I think when you, your financial reports, you just have to pick a consistent way you're going to look at it, and then you do whatever you need for special reports after that. Any other questions? My last piece is, I'll just give you a quick, we're starting to close out FY twenty-two, so, you know, we're trying to look at all the encumbrances that are out there and making sure that that they're valid encumbrances, that in fact, we're going to expend that money, and we're just trying to get down to the end of it, really, in the spending. The FY twenty-three budget has been set up, we're just now very, if we haven't already, and I'll talk to Lori Maury tomorrow, she wasn't available today, but tomorrow I'll talk to Lori and try to determine when, when the FY twenty-three budget is open for our staff. So what that means is they can start to put in purchase orders before they leave for the summer and so forth, so that we don't get behind. And we start to roll that out. So at this time of year, we actually run two, two budgets. We're running an FY twenty-three simultaneous with closing out an FY twenty-two, and that'll go on for the next couple of months. This is the fun time of year.
So we have a subsection of the business report to discuss suggested changes to financial reporting, and Jamie, was that anything that you, you had sent an email? Do you want to take the baton and talk about that?
Sure. So we haven't gotten to the audit report yet, so I don't know if we're discussing that tonight as well. In New Hampshire, as Dave knows, and it's always been that way, okay, so I'll, I'll start with that. Here at Fall Mountain, it's always been this way. Doesn't mean it's the right way, it was this way when I was here, okay, but nobody questioned it. When I got to Hanover, it was that way at Hanover too, and then I got a new auditor. And then it was questioned that our accounts payable and payroll, not so much payroll, because you have to make, you have to send payroll out regardless of whether it's approved ahead of time or not, it's payroll, it has laws and regulations you have to follow. With accounts payable, at most all, I think this is schools, towns, and cities, I'm not positive of that, but I think it's done the same. Usually, all of the expenditures are supposed to be reviewed prior to checks being sent out. Last time we were here meeting, I was the last one to get the whole pile of check runs, vouchers, okay? And it takes a lot of time to look through them here at a meeting, which is time that I'm not paying attention to what's going on in the room, right? And I got to thinking, because it's been so long since I used to do it that way, I got to thinking about the fact that my second audit at Hanover, I had a brand-new auditor who, you usually get what they call a, from your auditor, a governance letter. And that governance letter only goes to the school board, and it's a discussion usually between your auditor and your school board members on things that may have been found, but were not material in nature. So they don't write them up in the audit, right? But they usually will write a letter to your school board saying, hey, you know, you might want to spend a little time reviewing this, or changing that, or doing this, right? So that you're in compliance with RSA. So at Hanover, the first year I was, my books are audited, and a new auditor, they wrote us up in the governance letter that went to the school board, right, which is not material, so it wasn't, it didn't make it an unqualified audit. Or qualified, I always get that backwards. But they said, hey, you're breaking RSA, because the school board's supposed to sign off on stuff before payments are sent. Or something to that effect, right, they, so.
That's correct.
Yeah, so what we do up there to be in compliance and is that we have, and the, the document that I shared with you is something that we give new school board members that show, you know, how, and that, that's mine from Hanover, so it doesn't match the string of numbers that you're looking at in our right, but there's always, you know, your fund and your object, or your function and your object, they're always going to be there, those seven numbers in some manner will be somewhere, right? So we always give that to our new board members who are coming on, so it explains to them what you're looking at when you get a report, right? With account numbers and why they're there and what they're for, and it basically follows the New Hampshire governmental accounting book that was done way back, and we're redoing it in the process of updating it now. I'm also on the New Hampshire ASBO Professional Development Committee, and that's one of our tasks. So up there, in order to be in compliance, what occurs is when a voucher is run, whether it's payroll or accounts payable, it is sent, it is emailed, the voucher itself is emailed to the whole, all the school board members. And we have twelve depending, we have seven or twelve, depending on which district, like three districts. So it's sent to all the school board members, and out of that membership, two of us, two of them, two of us take responsibility each quarter for reviewing the vouchers prior to checks being sent out. That way, if there are any questions where it doesn't, where it doesn't make sense, or you, whatever, right? It goes to everybody, but everybody's not tasked with looking at it, two people are. Those two people then email the business office, it's not me, it's my financial services manager. They email the financial services manager and they say, I've reviewed the voucher, I'm giving it an approval. And the two people have to do that, or they do not send checks out, other than payroll, because you have to send payroll, okay? And so then what we do is when we have the school board sign off on all the vouchers, because that's required, right, for the records for audit, instead of getting this big thing, we, we still send the big thick book, right, to the, because we only meet once a month, each district up there, so it's really big. So we send that, but what we do, instead of you signing your name seventy-two times, we have an overview sheet on the front, and you can go out to our, our board docs site and look at this stuff, if you want to take a look at it. Because I'm not asking for an answer tonight, I just wanted to bring it up. And we have an overview sheet, and what it does is says Dresden School District, here's all the vouchers that were done for the month, right? Or however long span it was, because when you go through summer, we then take a voucher to that, you have a thing that's like six weeks, eight weeks, right? And it says, you know, it breaks it down, the voucher shows you the voucher, shows you what it was for AP or payroll, shows you the different funds that the money's coming from, and it gives you a total. And then it has all of their names on the bottom, and then you sign the bottom, and it covers all of those vouchers that are attached to that. And that is approvable by, by our auditors anyway, which is Cheryl Pratt. So it was approvable for Dresden Interstate, it was approvable for Ramon, it was approvable for New Hampshire.
It's similar to how they used to do it in Springfield.
I would imagine. A lot of them have, have done that, instead of, instead of holding checks, because when you actually physically hold checks back, you run the risk of having payments late and then incurring late fees, which is a nightmare. So that's why a bunch of districts still do it the way we do it here, okay? Because not all auditors will audit for RSA. Some of them are more in-depth about, I know Timmy Green, our auditor here in Tamara, Tamara have questioned it, they questioned it when I was you know, and for whatever reason, we never changed it, so I probably shame on me, but some way back, and shame on Steve, but if we have a chance to make it easier so that the whole school board can have their attention focused on what's going on in the room, I think it's a much better way to do it. It does not increase, I know there's a concern, because everybody's going to be new in the business office, and we don't want to put any more work on that, but when they're pulling, I know how to do this, because I run AP and payroll, and how to do it, right, same system. When you pull the vouchers down, instead of printing them, you would simply print a PDF and then attach it to an email.
Yeah, my, my only suggestion would be that we not start doing anything different until July.
Yeah, yeah, July one.
Right, because there's just so much change and mayhem right now.
No, right, no, and I would agree with that, but I think it's important that
We're, we're a tab, absolutely.
That we have a couple people in place, because if we all have any meetings all summer long. And then it takes the onus off of your accounting staff as well, because, you know, there's huge trust here, which is awesome. And there is big trust here, right? And so but, you know, we're, we, we, and now I'm talking about when we're running financials for a thirty, forty, fifty million dollar company, we're, we're humans, right? And humans are not perfect. No, and so sometimes we make little mistakes, you know, and, you know, you're not, we're not necessarily going to catch them all either, but at least we're saying we've put our eyes on it.
So your auditors don't care that you're approving this just through email? Your auditors don't care that you're just approving this through, by email, not using any kind of e-signature software?
No, because you're, because our email addresses belong to us, so they're considered, when you say affirmative, in an email, it's considered a legal binding. So, but you don't have to have an electronic signature.
Security standpoint, probably not.
Well, the accounts payable are not, those are public knowledge records. All school district records are public knowledge. The only thing in a school district that's not considered public knowledge or public, available for the public to see.
It's not my concern, it's about just having emails saying yes, when email is not entirely secure.
Sure. Unless you're within those, right, the land of the year. If you want, they could probably figure out how to put it.
We have like these signature, or put it so we can have something already in place.
Jamie, what do we need to get into place to have this actually make transition, change over during the summer? I mean, do we need a committee, or do we need to appoint people, or?
So at our next meeting, we would need two of us to say, we take the first quarter, right? Or take the first four months, whatever you want to do. That's how my boards do it, you know, and it's, it's always comical, because up there, we have four that we're running, four districts, and nobody wants to do Dresden, because it's the biggest, right? So everybody wants out of Dresden when Dresden comes. So everybody wants out of Dresden when Dresden comes up. But anyway, we don't have that problem here, because we're just one district. So we're all going to get the same volume of work. I'm going to say over the summer is lighter, obviously, because there's not as much purchasing usually going on or payroll. So I am more than willing to take, I'm more than willing to do it, you know, first, second shift, whatever, and to walk through it with folks, you know, if you want. But it shouldn't be any big change other than the security question, which is valid for, I'm going to say it's valid for some of the payroll information, perhaps it's being shared. You know, depending on what you're comfortable seeing, because again, payroll, you have to send it, right? There's a couple of reports that you could issue on payroll where you're not showing people's personal information. You're just showing name and total dollar amount, because that's all public.
So just to clarify, what is the primary purpose of doing this?
It's twofold, it brings you in, in compliance, right?
But are we not in compliance now?
You're not in compliance now, I can tell you that.
All right, so that's.
That's the first one.
Primary number one.
The second one is so that everybody's attention during a board meeting is focused on what we're doing and not reading through or not having the time to digest what you're looking at and ask the questions if something doesn't make sense to you.
Okay, so in that, we're putting the responsibility on those two members, because the other is the expectation that the others that received it in their email are still looking through it, but that only two are really saying, hey, we've, we're putting our stamp of approval on this. And then is there liability of those two individuals now that are putting their stamp of approval on it? Or is it no different than us all putting our stamp of approval?
No different than you putting your signature on it as it comes down this row, where you've just gone like this and signed it.
So either way, there's, you know, if you don't know, you don't know.
But it gives you the ability and opportunity to ask prior to anything's signed.
There's nothing saying that just because you're not one of the, the two of the quarter, that you're not necessarily going to look at it.
And you need to look at it if you're signing the document.
Right, but if you're not one of the two.
Right.
And you receive it, it's still an expectation that you.
In your, whatever time, midnight, two in the morning, six AM, whatever time you take to look at it, right? That you would, that you would review it.
But it frees us up for meeting stuff and really gives us the opportunity to put the time into that that we shouldn't be putting into it, which we can't put into it here, so.
After the fact here, correct.
The, the other.
Go ahead, Dave, sorry.
The other piece, and Jamie bring up good points, the other piece is it takes away any guessing and you don't have to, it doesn't all culminate at the board meeting. Every, all the questions get answered hopefully before you even come to the board meeting. And the transparency is huge when you do it in this fashion. Most districts have a version of this. The good news is, I've worked with Mary Henry before. Mary is accustomed to the process you're suggesting. So I'm not sensing that the transition, even though you have a new person coming in here, you should be able to put this in order pretty quick. It's not a, it's not something that's foreign. The only other thing that I would suggest, just and is that you do buy into, and I was never a fan of this, because it never happened during my career, but the electronic signing now makes life a lot easier, particularly when you have twelve, you know, a, a ton of board members and you can't get to them and everybody's spread out. When you buy into the, that doc sign or whatever you decide you're going to do, it's completely legitimate, it's completely recognized. But when we get to do MS twenty, all the MS forms every year and so forth, all of that can be done and is recognized by Department of Revenue. So it really takes away this trying to get everybody in one place at one time, as opposed to you can do the electronic signature and that works. So if you're going to go there, if you do this other piece, kind of a, the final piece might be to consider looking at the doc, the doc, electronic doc sign.
I seriously appreciate Jamie coming forward with this. I always have problems signing stuff that I can't review in a timely manner. And sometimes trying to be prepared for this meeting in the financials, especially if we're not even getting them until Friday is really difficult, so. Really appreciate Jamie spending time on this and hopefully we can get it going forward.
So I know you, you suggested that you're just bringing this up now, but it sounds like we need to make this change, so. I don't know if there's further discussion, but I, I like the idea of having the doc to sign for some of this, I, I like all of this, I particularly like the compliance. So. I don't know, if we have a motion to put this into place for July one, somebody wants to do that, or if I can do that, I would like to make that motion to accept this and we'll work out the kinks.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second the motion if you're making it, because I think this is an outstanding idea. I mean, like you said, this is the way we've always done it, I always take that response. But the, the bottom line is to have, to have it in advance, so we can actually see these things before the checks are cut. I think it's outstanding. And number two, to take two of us and say, okay, your task for this quarter, you go over everything with a fine-tooth comb, the rest of us is probably just going to skim it, but when it's our turn, we're going to be the ones, we're going to be the two people that are going to go through this, go through every last one of these things. I think that just puts more eyes on it, and I think that, that, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention, because I'm all for it. I think that's, this is the way to do it, I mean, in, in my town, I'm a selectman in Alstead, we get the AP in front of us before they cut the checks. Then we say, hey, Prescott, what, what in the world is this for? He tells us, and then we cut the check. And I think that's, that's just a safer way to do this.
We, we, so I just want to be clear. So at Hanover, we may have issued the checks, but we don't mail them until there's an approval, okay? So you may still get a report that has check numbers listed on it.
Sure, I mean, that's just your business people being ready to go. They're probably all stamped and everything.
Right, well, not quite, because you don't want to wreck a stamp, but, but I mean, that's, you know, we have timeframes that we say, okay, you know, by Tuesday afternoon, the only thing that it may change in knowing the process and, and it might be a little difficult for the principals, sorry, for the accounting department, is that it may change the fact that, that they run their AP really late. I mean, they'll run it right up to, you know, we have tight deadlines at Hanover where you have to have all your AP stuff in for the AP run by by Monday at four for a Friday run. So then it gives the depart, the department, finance department, time to go through all of that, right? Make sure all the attachments are there so they can run the checks and everything. And then they, that's when they email it and it gives the people who are approving two days, right? To approve and then get that approval back by Thursday, we mail checks on Thursday, by Thursday mornings, so checks can be mailed, so there's a two-day turnover. I think here we make, all our mails on Friday. So we would just have to work out with the finance department here on site, you know, Lori and her team, what those timeframes are and deadlines are, so it might be a little bit of a change in, you know, we can't say, I want a check and tell them the day before they're running.
Yeah. Yes.
I think the best thing for us to really get this started is to have a conversation and, you know, develop that timeline schedule, because that's an important piece. I know many times right now, we're waiting to Friday before we run to get that last, you know, check paid. And so that's going to be a really important piece that our secretaries know and our keepers know that there's timelines, we've never really had that before. So if this isn't go, then I would like to set up a meeting with you and a few other people at central office. I could do a group lead and have that get, at least the conversation before the end of the year, so you can be ready in July.
Dave?
Can I just clarify on the original motion? You said you would like to have this in place by July one. That might be, that puts a lot of pressure on folks that aren't here, particularly like for Mary Henry who won't be on site before that. I think it's important that you integrate this into your FY twenty-three. But when you say July one, then that means that we have to develop something for somebody that really isn't here yet and won't start. Might we consider sometime like in Aug, you know, the August first, it would give you the latitude to put this together and then incorporate it into the FY twenty-three budget?
I think you're right, and that actually was my next question to say, is this an unreasonable timeframe to say July first? That's a changeover, but that's not, like, they're not going to sit there on day one and figure out this process, so. Is August first a better, okay? So can we amend?
Yeah, my motion actually is to implement a process.
Okay.
With what Jamie laid out, and then I just, I need a notation that it will begin on this first, it's not part of my motion, it's really to.
All right, so we got a roll call this. Shelley, you ready?
Yes, I'm on board.
All right, Jamie.
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe? Kevin?
Yes.
Sarah? I'm a yes. All right, well, thank you, Jamie, appreciate that.
Hey, I learned the hard way from Hanover, so I, you know. We can thank them.
Are we, please, would be reported, okay? Onto next order of business is old business and that is the bus purchase that we've been discussing. Lori or Art, if you want to discuss this, we did receive some more, more information in our emails, pictures of, of the bus in question. Another document, I think, was a rundown of just what's expected in the inspection.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the part that, that won't pass inspection from September, is because of those guidelines. To give you a little bit of background and how we got, got to this point, back in nineteen and twenty, when Jim and I met and decided to pull everything in-house and start doing our own mechanics in-house, purchase our fleet rather than leasing them every six to eight years like we had been doing. Basically, is, is a cost savings. Just to give you a little idea of how much money we've saved this first year, is the last year that we had STA as our lease, you know, lease or, we leased the buses off from, we paid roughly about two hundred and fifty thousand that year for bus maintenance. This year to date, when Jim put this, this budget together, he set up fifty thousand for maintenance, which I did not believe was going to be feasible. We're just about a little over seventy thousand so far this year, we put into bus maintenance. Part of it is because of one of these older two thousand twelve's, that I, I think you got the document there, with almost ten grand, we lost a fuel tank. The second one is very tender and it's not long before that fuel tank will be going as well. So just to give you a little idea of what we put into the buses, that we put the fuel tank in, which was like forty-five hundred, we had to have some tension in pulleys, full four shocks, all brakes, front tires, new chains, had a windshield that had replaced it, and we were looking at like ninety-four fifty-five that we put in towards it to get it through the rest of this year. When we decided to go this route, we actually purchased seven two thousand twenty-one buses, which we have now, and seven two thousand sixteen buses, which were used and we got a good deal on. Also, we decided to purchase three two thousand twelve's from STA. And Jim got a really good deal on the price of those buses. We were able to pick out the three buses that we wanted. One of them was a short wheelchair bus, that was a backup for a wheelchair, we have two wheelchair students in the district. And the other two were the two buses in question that were, that we're looking at to replace. Because we had put the most money to them, one of them had a brand-new top end and motor crew on it. And the other one had some potential work that we'd already done through STA. So that's why we purchased those two buses, to go use, be to use as our, what we call a multipurpose bus. Most buses are to be, are used for sports trips, athletics, field trips, and also to fill in for a roof if a roof bus goes down for any mechanical reasons. We're waiting for a park to fix it, one of those multi-use buses goes out onto the roof to continue with delivering students to and from school. When we did that, Jim had put into the capital gains that this, this year we were going to replace the two thousand twelve, two of the two thousand twelve buses with two new ones. And going forward, keep rotating two buses in, two buses out. We knew that this first year, we were going to take a hit, we would have a lot of equity built up these buses, because the buses are eleven years old. Your average lifespan for a bus is eight to ten years, and we're well over that. So, but going forward, we knew that we were going to have equity built up in the two buses that we would sliding out. For instance, next year will be two sliding out to two thousand sixteen's, which will have equity built up in there, which will go forward to purchase price of the new ones. So we had originally put these two buses into the budget and because the budget was so high with the extra fuel cost and everything else going on, we decided to pull it out of the budget, to lower the budget down and to come up with other ways of trying to fund these. We were able to fund one with a grant. And this is where we were at now, where we're asking the board to help fund the other one with any surplus money that will be left at the end of the year.
Correct.
Jamie?
Yeah, just a little clarification. So when you say that the last payment to STA was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, was that the complete payment?
That was for maintenance. For the twenty buses that we had, that we had leased from them.
Okay, so what was the lease payment amount? I believe that was a total payment for, for the lease and maintenance.
Okay.
So the comparison then on the savings, I just don't, I just want it to be clear, because that's usually how I negotiated a couple of those. So usually what would occur is that the lease payment and the maintenance costs are all in one. And the lease payment and the maintenance costs are lower in the beginning and they get higher in the end, because the buses get older. So, so for comparison, you're saving, because your lease payment looks like it's a hundred and twenty-four thousand a year, right? Plus fifty would be one seventy-five, so you're saving about seventy-five-ish while they're newer. So just a point of clarification on how that works, okay? I had one other question I was going to ask you. So when you say you're going, the equity in the sixteen's, were you going to trade the sixteen's in?
The plan is that our first and two Daco will purchase. And I, he actually is looking at, for advisors to buy the two two thousand twelve's that we have now. Because we were planning on scrap that, because they, they, there just not a lot, we're going to take off whatever we could salvage to use on our fleet that we have now for spare parts and, and, and scrap that. He says that he can give, he asked for everything that we had put into the buses, he says he can do better than that, that somebody will, he'll find somebody that will buy that.
So you might have some offsetting revenue that could go towards.
Correct, what we had decided to do, we had discussed with Dave, Dave about this, is to, any money that we get from those two buses, will come in as a revenue and go, and go back into whatever line.
Offset.
Offset, yes.
All right, thank you, Art.
That was actually my question, is what's going to happen to these buses? And, you know, you spent ten thousand dollars on them, wait, can you get some of that back somehow? And, you know, you spent ten thousand dollars on them. Wait, can you get some of that back somehow?
Well, yes. Like I said, we were, were planning on just getting scrap value because of the bad shape they're in. But Matt from Daco says he can do better than that. So he's looking at giving us the best possible points that he can, going through all his vendors and stuff to be able to sell. He's asked us for pictures. We've sent him pictures and whatnot. I'm just waiting to hear back. Going in for the debt, back in December, when we were looking to, to swap these two buses out and get two new ones in, I had ordered two buses through Daco. With the understanding that if we didn't get funding, that they could sell them to somebody else. Those two buses that we had on the board were due to start being built in May. The latest check now is those buses aren't even to be started and built in November. Okay? Which is way out beyond. I mean, there's no way we can start school two buses short. So we were able to locate two buses in Maine that are already built, two thousand twenty-threes. I believe I, you got your packet there, you had what? The difference was that they didn't have the on-spot chains, which they are going to purchase and put on for us. They didn't have the integrated child seats, which two, two seats of each one of our new buses have the built-in five-point harnesses that you can pour out of the seat and set a, set a child in, and then they fold that back up in so you can use it for older, older students.
Yeah.
They weren't going to have only the one-stop line, which all of our two thousand sixteen's have now. They have the front stop bomb that comes out. If you notice, our brand-new two thousand twenty-ones, they have double stop bomb, one in the front, one in the rear. These buses only have the one-stop bar, which is not a deal killer. And they didn't have the HEPA filter, which we had ordered with the, the two that we're going to have built. But we have the HEPA filters that we have now that we installed on our buses that we can take out and put into these buses. So we'll still have the air filtration system in the two buses.
I have a question.
I think that came in a separate email. Not in our.
We're talking about the prices we gave, prices last time, so I didn't.
I have pictures here of the two buses in Maine along with that document. Pass around and take a look at it.
I'm curious what the market for buses is. This was two weeks ago. Like, have you put a deposit on it, like, to hold it?
No, he is, that is holding this right. He had loaded us this price of ninety-seven, four thirty-five. That is the locked-in price.
We, we dealt with Matt from Daco when we bought our fleet, the last fleet I purchased before I left.
That was Matt number one. We're on Matt number three now.
Oh, are you? Okay.
This is the third Matt.
Third Matt.
The third Matt over the last four years.
So Daco has a relationship with STA in this.
Okay.
So two thousand nineteen is when we purchased the buses that we were leasing. Is that?
At the end of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-two year.
And that twelve was a bus we were leasing?
That's correct.
The leasing company, we were paying to maintain those buses as part of our lease payments.
Yes.
Were the leasing companies undercoating those buses, and then do we undercode our buses?
No. No, no.
You can't.
Nobody that I know of in the area undercoats full-size buses. We have undercoded our three mini-buses that we purchased because those we planned on running until they won't run no more. We have undercoded those. The price of that is three hundred bucks per bus, for the mini-bus. I am waiting to get a quote on, I have asked the, the people that undercode those buses and undercode that are mini-buses to give you a quote on a full-size bus. He said it would take roughly about a fifty-five gallon drop of the oil to do a full-size bus. So I'm waiting to get a price on that. I took one of these buses over to him because the question had come up about repairing the bus. He will not touch it. He says that the bus has gone too way too far and the liability of being a school bus, he will not touch it.
Yeah.
I did reach out to Corey Patton. I sent him some pictures, but he said he would need to see the bus. And these buses right now are rolling nonstop. They're not sitting long enough. I mean, if we had to get a bus to have a look at, because of the end-of-year trips and all those sorts of things right now, these buses aren't sitting too long enough to be able to get them up there to have it booked at. We ended up going to Comitches. We used to take all of our stuff to Corey Patton up there, and we ended up going to Comitches locally because they were able to give us a better, better price. There were several times that we had buses that got backed into and dented. And rather than replacing the whole panel like we had done previously going to Patton's, they had to dial over to Comitches to be able to pull the debt out, repay it, and do something on it with the money. So it was, saved us a lot of cost, saved us money compared to having it done locally.
So did you all receive the photos, at least to see? Not the new photos, the, the damage?
I have some more here if you want to pass them around.
There was one in particular that looked like, like on a pickup bed, you have, you have cross-members that are in the bed, and those tend to rot out where they are connecting the frame rails. Is that what one of those was? Like, it looked, one of them looked like it completely rotted, rotted through.
Yes. The mechanic, when he inspected it last, did a very gingerly job because he knew we needed the buses. If he were to take a hammer and tap in a lot of places, he would actually put a hole through. And so that's why we were very gingerly to get it through another year.
I have a question. Am I free to go? So I just want clarification of what I'm reading. Transportation continuous cycle of renewal, twenty-two, twenty-three, replace two older buses, one with Esser, which we approved, and the one that you are looking to get approved tonight. Then you go to twenty-three, twenty-four. It says two new buses to replace older buses. Twenty-three, twenty-four, budget for two older two sixteen with newer buses. And then replace the two thousand twelve short wheelchair bus with another one. That looks like five buses for twenty-three, twenty-four. Is, am I reading that right, or is the, is there an extra line in there?
The, the actual twenty-three, second twenty-three, twenty-four, so actually then twenty-four, twenty-five. That was a typo. This is over the next three, three years.
All right, because when we met in December, no one talked about two buses. We only talked about one. And then you mentioned it again tonight, where you said we would just kind of figure it out. If we took it out of the budget, we would just kind of figure it out as we went along.
That is for now, but yes. Going forward, for, we've got the budget for the next following year is what I'm going to bring up to do the, the two new buses for the following year, the Budget Committee and the, and the Board when we start doing budget talks.
All right. I, I guess I'm just wondering why two buses wasn't brought up in December? If we knew one was absolutely critical, or at least on the critical stage, why there wasn't more of a fight to keep that within the budget instead of hoping that there'd be a surplus or we'd find it in the budget?
The thing that they talked about that last week, our last meeting, Shelley, and they said that they were hoping at that point they did it. They were, they were hoping that it wouldn't be this, this bad at this point.
There's also, I would say, add a little bit of spice to this. It's just, if, if we decide to approve that and then we go and order it, is there a bus on the ground that we can even get during budget season next year? And I, I have no idea, but it.
What do you mean?
Well, if we didn't do this now, and, and in, in the future, we go to do that, what, like, you were saying, the, the bus you ordered got pushed back. So we don't have that order in or retained, and then we go back to, now we're at December or, or March of next year in the order bus. Where does that put? It, there's just such a lag.
There is because of getting parks.
Yeah.
There's certain parts on the buses that it just keeps pushing them back. Like I said, we were slated to have ours starting to be built if we were to buy them at the beginning of May. Then they got pushed back to June, and now they're back to November. And they, that's not guaranteed that they will have the parks in November to even start building them. So luckily, we were able to find through Matt, who was able to find these two buses in Maine that were available now. One of them, we did secure with the, part of the Esser grant. And the other one, I asked him if he would please, when there are good outstandings, to hold on to fork me until I got approval or disapproval from the Board, and I would let him know. And then he can resell, let it go to somebody else if the Board disapproves it, or if he approves it, we have it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve this bus, but moving forward, I'd like to maybe plan these things a little bit better because, like I said, we did discuss it slightly in December. And then the next time we met to talk about the budget, the bus was taken off. And, and I just think that with our kids and transportation, we just shouldn't be like, well, we'll take it off because the budget's too high and we'll kind of cross our fingers and hope we can get a new one by the end of the year. So, but I make a motion to approve the bus.
Second it.
Roll call? When we do roll call, do we have to go back to Shelley for the entire? Yes, okay. So Shelley, we'll start with you again.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
I will.
Thank you. So just a question. When do you think you can have those delivered from Maine?
He said that if he had a decision this week, which I told him I could give him, that he should be able to have the chains assembled and on and have them be here by the end of June, beginning of July.
So we can start the next year?
Yeah. You'll definitely have them next year. You'll have them next year.
Down June thirteenth at our XPD.
Yeah, I'd like that. We may have one here, the one over here with the Esser grant, that they already got the chains ordered and stacked and put on that one. The other one was the one we were waiting on. He didn't want to order the chains if we weren't going to purchase it. We had ended this off somebody else about chains. I told him, actually, we definitely can't run without chains.
Do we cycle? This is something I, I kind of asked Lori, but let's say you have one route in the district. It's like your longest, hardest route. So that beats a bus up. Does that be, let's just say that Route Six, I have no idea. But let's say Route Six is the hardest route. Does a bus only, does that get assigned to Route Six for the extent of its life? Or does it come off of Route Six to, to like, hey, you did your service, we're taking you off?
Yeah, that's generally what, what we do when we look at when, going forward, when our goal is to not get to the point where we used to lease a group of buses for eight years. And the eighth year, we're beating our head to the ground, beating the buses on the road because of mechanical issues with the toll. By rotating two out, rotating two new in each year, that's what we look at when we decide, hey, which two of these buses are we going to slide into their multi-use bus that may not get used every year or quite as often as a roof bus does? We take the ones with the highest mileage on them and slide them into the multi-use and put the ones with the lower mileage on. In the past, we had rotated them. For instance, if we got a bus that puts on, say, twenty-eight thousand miles this year, we got a bus that only puts on twelve thousand miles, we'll swap them.
Yeah.
So the bus, the mileage comes up equally. So that when we got ready to turn the lease back, we had equal amount of miles on a whole fleet rather than one with three hundred thousand and then the rest of them with, you know, mid-two hundred thousand.
Jamie, do you have a question?
No, no. You did, because that's what we used to do, and I was going to assume that he was still doing it.
Still doing the same thing, yes.
Okay. Well, thanks. Thanks for the report. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Next order of business is the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull anything off? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make the motion.
All right. And Shelley, I'm going to go to you.
Yes, and I hope the junior ROTCs have a good time on their trip.
Jamie?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes. Pass. All right. Other. This is my category, so. All, I just wanted to speak a little bit. I had asked all of you to provide to me sort of your, your top three priorities that you felt that we as a board should be tackling. And so that wasn't just because I was curious. I, I wanted, I, I wanted to see with your sort of individual thoughts not influenced by sitting in a room together or thinking like, what do you think? Because you've spoken to your constituents, you have conversations, you know, what are your top three? And then review them and see if we have a, a pattern with those certain things. So it's not as though that needed to be done in any specific time. And if you haven't sent them to me, you still can, because I, I really have just, when we go into our strategic planning, it also, and our goal setting, it will help to know that we, there's, we're really not going to work outside of those things that everybody has reported that are the top three priorities. At least that's my thought process moving forward to this. You know, if you're bringing those now, then, then we should have a pretty good idea of what our goals are to attack those three priorities. And if there's overlap from individual board members, then we should be able to focus on that. So I did ask some previous board members as well. And just to kind of really get a good grasp on people that have been involved and are out in the community and talking, because ultimately, you are not in a box and you just come up with what your priorities are. You had to have had that based on your actions with the community. So brings up part B of this, community interactions, community relations. There, this is a multifaceted thing. So a lot of interactions that we have with people, they're going to be good. They're going to, like, people are going to share positives with you of the district. And you, as an individual board member, you may hear that and say, oh, thank you. And then it doesn't necessarily come back to the rest of the board. And I think that it would be, it would be nice, so to try to bolster up, which was one of our goals last year, the community relations piece, so that we're bringing that report in. That would be nice. The second thing is, and I think it's hard, and we do have a lot of new board members. I would still consider myself a new board member, but when you come on as a board member, you, and I'll speak for myself. You think like, oh, there's all this stuff that needs to be done. And I'm riding in on my white horse, and I think we're going to get all of this stuff done and not really knowing that, hey, there are all these processes in place and procedures and policies that you need to follow. And a lot of that comes from the fact that you're not a board member before. And so you're out there and you're talking about individual things that are happening and, and you're empathetic to people and the causes, and you, you want to make a difference. So there's a shift, where there's a shift when you actually get on the board where there is a process and procedure in place when you hear something from community members, from staff, of, of what you need to do. And it's really hard because. of, of what you need to do. And it's really hard, because I think all of us have that want to make sure that people feel heard and to be empathetic. But there definitely is, is a line, and so the, the biggest thing to focus on here, and I did send you an email, which it's, it's in our school board policies, and we can make this public so that people can go to those policies if they go back and watch this. But really, if you want to help somebody, and they have a legitimate cause, and they, they don't just sort of want to vent to you, the, the absolute best thing to do is, is say, here is the chain of command, and if there's something actionable, like it, it really needs to be addressed, it's not fair to the rest of the board for an individual person to hear that in that moment. So it needs to go to the chain of command, which would be the lowest level of administration, and then up on through that. And so then, one of the things that we hear is, okay, well, if that person's not comfortable with that, well, then they could, they could go above the first level of administration to the next one. Ultimately, if they are not comfortable with any of the administration, there is a policy, and that goes for, you know, staff or, or public parents. It's all in there. That they, there is a process that they can follow, but you being the individual board member that hears the extent of the entire situation, whatever it may be that they are talking about, puts you at a disadvantage, and it really puts them at a disadvantage, because if you say to them, hey, you know, I don't really think that's a big deal, and, and maybe don't bring it up. Well, that's not fair to them now, because maybe it is something, and you, as an individual, made that decision, and that's not the way that it should be. And that's not to say that it wasn't in your best interest to give that advice, but that is why we're a board, so. We have our own policies within the board. There's the BBAB, duties of board members and board chairman. BHC, board employee communications, that was voted on in two thousand twenty-one. And, and really, like, I think to just remember, here's something, hey, there's a concern. If this is a, something that you're really passionate about, this needs to go to your administrators, and then on up through the chain, and then ultimately, we as a board will hear it. But it has to go through that process for you to really get the appropriate amount of attention on that. So that was something that was not really explained to me as I started eighteen months ago, or whatever it was. And you're still being empathetic to the cause, because at least if you give them the direction, say, here's what you can do, not just, ah, don't talk to me, you know, that's what not what we're here for. That's, that's not the point of this. It's that a lot smarter people than myself have already given this thought, and there are things in place. And so we just need to redirect people to do that, so. That's all I had to say about that. We are, we actually don't have a policy in place on even exactly, you know, we have like the, the community public complaints, but staff complaints. There's not a specific policy for that. So there is one from the New Hampshire School Board Association. So we're gonna have to have some discussions about that in the future. We're not gonna do that tonight, but. We can, we can think about that. So does anybody have any discussion with that, questions?
No, I'm sorry, I sent you my things.
And it's okay.
Alyssa even reminded me.
It's all right.
I have a, I have a question that's not related to whatever you just said. Do we have, do we have a date for our retreat yet?
I'm still waiting on, I'm still waiting on everybody to give me times if they are not available, so just gentle reminder because summer schedules are kind of crazy for everybody. If you can send me dates that are out for you, then I can try to schedule something around it.
I'll do it right now, so it's okay. You're not, you're not alone, Jamie. It's okay.
So Shelley, to, to, to be continued.
All right, next is committees. Do we have any committee updates?
I do. I wanted to say so. Yes. I very proudly wanted to say that one of our Fall Mountains students that is going to River Valley Technical Center, on April, I missed this, the last meeting, so I feel very bad, and I apologize. But on April fifth and sixth, the RVTC students participated in the annual Spring Leadership and Skills Conference, held at various locations, held at various locations around the state of Vermont, with award ceremony held at Vermont Technical College. Students who won gold medals will be traveling to Atlanta, Georgia, June twenty-twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, for the annual National Leadership and Skills Conference. The following students won medals. And, I won't read all of them, gold medal in television production is John Hassett from Fall Mountain Regional High School. So I wanted to very much congratulate. Nice job. So if you could make sure that he knows that he was spoken of at the board meeting, so that knows that we're very proud of him, okay?
Do we have a treasurer's report? Oh, yes. Do you have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Second.
Joe, second. Roll call, Shelley?
I'm gonna have to stay, I haven't seen.
You know, I just felt like you were here, so. Jamie?
I'm still reading it, but I'm gonna assume that everybody else who already signed it did so after reading it, so I will say yes.
Alyssa?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
All right, do we have any non-publics then? Hopefully so. So, do I have a motion to adjourn? Others than Shelley?
I'm not abstaining from that. I'll vote for that.
But it's almost assumed, Shelley, that.
You're always the one.
All right, Shelley, are you, are you okay with adjourning?
Yes.
All right, Jamie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I should make y'all sit here, wait till I read through all of this, before I say yeah, but I would be outvoted anyway, so it's okay. Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I mean. All right, well, thanks, everyone.
To my point, I'm still here reading all this thing.